Physicians. In the state to qualify as a district and then from there I'd like to build in student contact physicians first. So that our students are not being harmed or hurt by cuts. And then fill in from there and that's basically what I would like to see happen. I'd like a clear budget put together. Where line by line, you can tell exactly who is making what and every line is one person. For an expense instead of some lines being one person, some lines being three or four. So I just think clarity in the budget is really important. For academic excellence, I mean, I don't, we're experiencing a lot of cuts right now. I don't want to see the district. That has kind of risen and become such a quality district in the state. Lose its ability to give our kids. What they deserve and what we've been giving them. What I would advocate for would be a curriculum review committee. So that we can make sure that as we're offering curriculum, it's relevant. And the students can access it. And that we're teaching them in a way where they can, where they can access the information and I would like to do that. By using data because we collect data all the time. So what is the data telling us? Is our literacy program appropriate? Uh, how are our math scores? Where do we need interventionists and making sure kids get intervention? Early enough so that we can help them excel as soon as possible. And my, my other overarching goal, and I know this is slightly outside school committee purview. Is to bring the community back together. Because I don't want to live in a place that's so divided where the kids. And the families are put against the seniors are put against the single people and the young families. I think that we all have things in common and I think we can all come together and figure out where do we want the town to go? Where do we want our district to go and how do we fund it in a way that works? So that people are not being pressed out of their homes. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's my turn. So good evening, everyone. I want to thank the PTO and Swallow Union Proseats event. Inviting me to be participating in it. My name is Raphael Bodd, I'm the vice chair of the school committee and one of your Dunstable representatives. I sit before you, I thought we were gonna stand. I sit before you tonight, ask for your support for my reelection bid. I'm running for reelection to ensure Dunstable continues to have a voice at the decision-making table. And make sure no one is silenced. I understand the importance of uniting to find solutions that will maintain our district's success with all of its stakeholders. I aim to continue representing the interests of the taxpayers, the parents and the students. I am passionate about civic engagement and serving our community. My family's lived in this town since the seventies. I attended Swallow Union, this building. I attended the middle school and I graduated from the high school in 2010. So I have a strong and deep connection to our district and its success. My involvement in local politics and public service began early. From winning a second grade student council election in this very building. To serving on the high school school council, the student council and as a student representative on the school committee for three years. I am the vice chair, as I said previously, and the chair of the diversity, equity, inclusion advisory committee. I have been deeply involved in contract negotiations, curriculum assessments. And the budgeting process. I've served as the secretary of the school, of the school committee. I've served on all the subcommittees, policy, budget and finance and the CIAA, which is curriculum construction and assessment. I'm also the legislative liaison that deals with our state legislators. I'm also an active member of a prominent state committee where I continue to advocate our district and our town. And strive for equitable representation and resources, but at the state level. So goals for the next three years. One, equity and representation. I'm going to work tirelessly to look at and amend the regional agreement to ensure each member's vote is equally weighted. Correcting the current imbalance that disadvantage, that disadvantages Dunstable. I want to see transparency and accountability. By advocating for detailed public reporting of all of our districts' assessments, audits. And ensuring that every success and challenge is openly discussed and addressed. Budget management, given our physical constraints, I will continue pressing for state reimbursements from our legislators. And advocating for responsible budgeting that aligns with our community's educational aspirations without compromising. The quality of all of our programs. And then the quality education, I'm dedicated to advancing evidence-based curricula. And fostering professional development to really uphold the high standards of our educational system. In closing, I'm asking for your vote to continue the work, the hard work ahead. My deep roots in this community, combined with my extensive experience and dedication, make me uniquely qualified to represent you. Let us move forward together. Building a brighter future for all of our students, all of our families and all of our taxpayers. Thank you for your support and your trust over the years. Together we can make a lasting impact. For more information on me or my campaign, you can visit my website at raphaelbodd.com or my Facebook campaign page at Raphael Bodd for the school committee. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the questions. And Christina will give Raphael a break from speaking to ask you the first question that we posed and that is. What qualifications do you have to serve effectively in this role?
Sure. So as I alluded to in my introduction, um, I served as the president of the PTO at Swallow Union here for two years. And I actually came into that role after only having been a family here for one year. And it was during COVID when my family started and I had never stepped foot in the building. And there was an opening for president and. Nobody wanted to take it and I wanted to help because the school had done so much for my kids and so I threw my hat in the ring and I stepped in. And I asked the outgoing president, would you bring me in the building so that I can see it before I'm actually the president of the PTO, just so I understand what the layout of it is? But that is just an example of if there is a need or an opportunity, I am there to volunteer for it. I served as the president for two years. We brought in a lot of enrichment programs for our kids. We brought in a lot of community activities and different fundraisers that we did. We hosted the color run, which is now, it was the first year we pulled it off and it's now become an annual tradition. Uh, we host a lot of things for the kids like the Monster Mash. And um, we, just a ton of fundraisers to support their enrichment programs. But in doing that, I also developed relationships with the teachers as well. And so I have a, a history of collaborating with all different kinds of groups and bringing them together to find common ground. I've also served on the school council, which I also mentioned before for three years. Um, and our primary goal is to figure out what money we have, what central office has given us to work with. And where, where the biggest need is and how to allocate that need and what we want for our students for the year. I served on that under Mr. Meyerson for one year and then I've, I've served on it with Mrs. Jarvis for the last few years. I think that in addition to those things, the kind of the less tangible are that I'm a listener. So I don't come to the table with everything figured out. I want to hear from people. I want to hear from the community. Especially at a time like this, what it is you are looking for. And I want to bring collaborative solutions to the table.
Are you still in your meeting?
I'm okay. Okay, sorry, it's just. It's like a voice from there. Um. And I'm, I'm not coming to the table with things already figured out. I want to work together. I want to see all sides of. What we're trying to figure out and, and try to find common ground among all people. And so I think listening and collaboration and bringing the community and not shutting them down is incredibly important to me.
Thank you. Freezing questions?
Oh, so I'd like to think the last four years is a good qualification to continue on. You know, I said earlier, I've served on all the subcommittees. This year I got the privilege of serving on the superintendent's search committee, chose and supported our new superintendent who will be starting here soon. I'm also part of the union negotiation team, uh, both in 2021 and 2024. And at all of those things, I consistently make sure Dunstable is represented with a strong and experienced voice. And that has not always been an easy thing to do, but it's happened. So. You know. Similar to other meetings, um, I won't be silenced and I don't agree with that and I agree with collaboration. And also advocate effectively for the town's needs and the educational welfare of our students. I know being a former student in this district, what budget cuts do to kids. I was there as a sophomore in 2008, dealing with the budget crisis then. Our class sizes went up, beloved teachers were cut, but we were able to do with what we had. And that's all we could do. And a big shout out to the teachers because they really made it. With uh. Having students be able to learn and continue and be successful with what they need. With less to work with. And they come to school every day with a smile on their face, making sure those students are able to get that. So I remember back then, we see it now and even though it is unfortunate, um, you know. It, it is what it is at this point, but that doesn't mean we give up and we're going to still continue to look at all avenues. Invite everyone to the table and get through it together. So.
Thanks. Next question is, what is your plan or has been your approach to stay connected to the school committee?
Me first? Okay. So up until this point, I volunteer. Like I said, I have my, I have a child here at Swallow Union. I have a child at the middle school right now. When I was the president of the PTO, I was here almost every day doing something. And so this was like a second home and when you're in the school all the time. You're hearing from teachers, you're seeing students, you're talking to people, you're understanding what's going on. Kind of behind the scenes. It's, the middle school doesn't allot as many opportunities for parents to get involved, but I have volunteered. Uh, especially at the book fair, that's kind of my favorite thing, but I, I've done setup and, and sales at the book fair. Um, I go to events there. I have good relationships with the teachers there as well. And I think. So going forward, if I were to, to be elected to the school committee, what I would ask. From the superintendent is if we could form advisory groups with the principals. And teachers and even students at all the levels. So that we could get regular feedback about what is actually going on in the schools. I don't know if I can, I can say this, but over the last number of years, it feels like sometimes what's actually going on is not. Communicated or talked about openly and I feel like that does a disservice to the community and it makes people feel disconnected. And as a parent who has kids who have frequently come home and told me things that are not being communicated outwardly. I think that we need to, to really start to hear from the people who are in the buildings and understand what it is they're going through. And what they need and what we can do to help make them able to do the best job that they can do. And so that is something that I would advocate for. I understand that there are rules around whether school committee members can have. Conversations with teachers without the superintendent's buy-in on that. But I would, I would ask the superintendent to please create these advisories so that we can get, there should be a regular feedback loop. And I know that on this, at the state level, there's not a teacher rep on the school committee at the state level. I don't know, I know we have a CPAC rep who's a non-voting member on our school committee, which I think is a wonderful addition. I'd like to see a, a teacher, maybe a rotating. Physician of teach, of teacher come on regularly to kind of update us on what's going on. I just think more communication with the buildings is essential.
Thank you.
So um, one of the big things for me is communication and transparency. Um, I fought for it. I do it myself. Um, you know, we utilize office hours here, which um. We started last year for budgetary purposes. This year we created something new, making it a hybrid model. So that if you can't come to town hall, you can sit in your living room, at your office, wherever you are and still participate. So we're trying to boost participation throughout the community. I also believe in site visits. I spent the day today at Swallow Union going through. Worrying the buildings, seeing the students in action, staff, um, you know, and it's great. So um. Let's see what else. Also, just since we're such a small, you know, community and a lot of us know each other from other things. Many of you have found me on Facebook or have my number or my private email, my school email, you know, and some of you call me and that's all fine. I don't have an office, but my virtual office door is always open. Um, and I welcome commentary and I welcome suggestions and solutions and, you know. None of us on the school committee currently, none of us have all the answers. We rely on our neighbors and friends. For suggestions, for help, for other solutions that we may not, you know, need, which is collaboration outside of the school committee. I also believe in a community-driven approach where every stakeholder's voice is valued. So maybe not at a school committee meeting, but at office hours, maybe with the town administrator, which I have a good relationship with. Um, you know, and various other forums, something like this, we can just, you know, even. Mobile office hours, kind of like an ice cream truck that says office hours, you just drive around town and. People come over and tell you what about schools, you know, just anything to really open up the lines. Communication and keep them open, not just open them, keep them open. And prioritize communication with everyone as one of my leadership goals, meaning listening to all of them. So not just the town administrator, not just municipal officials, not just the budget of finance person, but. Community members, the seniors who I'm uh, liaison, the council on aging. You know, and, and even students. I said before, I was a high school rep on some of these committees, on the school council, on this uh, school committee. And they valued my opinion. They asked me, what do you and your students think or talk about or this or that, or what do you think of this new curriculum we're doing, you know, so. It really comes from the administration too, having that strong partnership and, and really looking out. I'm excited the new superintendent is coming. I'm excited to see his new approach. I'm excited to see what he brings from Maine. And hopefully we can all rally around him and support him and, you know, climb back up that hill and continue to be successful. So. Thank you.
Thank you. My third question is, what is your approach to problem solving? How would you approach addressing the current budget crisis the district faces? I'll just keep switching back.
Uh, so I've alluded to this already. For problem solving, my biggest approach is to listen to, to people. I mean. I listen to everybody's ideas and try to find common ground. And try to find a collaborative approach forward. The budget prices that we have right now is, is significant. And. What I. What I think that we need to come back to is again, we have to look as a district at. What is our top priority? What are we trying to achieve as a district? And what is our town trying to achieve? And in many ways, I feel like we have to go back to the basics and we have to fund those things. We have to come back to this. Kind of overarching, what is the overarching value? That we want to create in our community and that is where we start. And then as we are able to come out of the current crisis that we're in, then we can add more things back to that. But right now I think we get, we get as basic as what are our goals? So the school committee. When the, when the final school committee for the year is set on May 22nd. What is the school committee's goals for the upcoming year? When the superintendent comes in on July 1st, meeting with the new superintendent to discuss what is his vision? What is the school committee's vision? What is the town want to see from us? What are we going to deliver to them? And how do we fund that? And then we build on that as we go forward. And I think a lot of what is going on right now is. We, we have to stop convoluted things and we have to come down and distill things down to, to basics. Because we don't have the funds to be excessive about what, what we're offering and what we're trying to get out of our district.
So the budget crisis, um. It's an important one, um, and it is a crisis, uh. But it depends for me on the situation, how to respond with what's going on. Um, and a big thing in conjunction with that is to rely on clear and transparent. Communication with thorough data analysis. Meaning how is anyone supposed to make an informed decision about anything in life without seeing the whole picture? So whether it's numbers, uh, budget, uh, cuts, curriculum, whatever it is. We need to see the whole thing and not just the good parts of it, not just one graph. Maybe the other six graphs that tie into it. And really through all that, through clear transparency, you can make an informed decision, a better one. I also strongly continue to advocate for the district to strictly adhere to the two and a half budget. In um, increased limit. You know, our new superintendent said during his interview, you know, he wouldn't go past 3%. So. I'm gonna hold him to that, which I think a lot of people in this room and in the town will hold them to as well. But um, it'll ensure that the district maintains a balanced budget while still providing essential services for the community. This is what the crisis is. So if we go with it head on, we can manage it. And like we did in the past and like we always do, because Groton Dunstable is a resilient district, we will get through it. And we can avoid burdening the taxpayers with excessive taxes by keeping the budget increase at a reasonable level. And so, you know, when he comes in, he's going to be able to look at what just happened. And hopefully have a plan, not all the answers, but a plan on how to move forward. And I believe this is the most responsible and fair approach for the district and its residents. And just lastly, continuing to pressure the state officials. For promised funding, including the full reimbursements for chapter 70, the charter schools and the regional transportation. As legislative liaison, I talked to both our senators and both our representatives. Senator Kennedy, Rep. Starsdale three days ago, Senator Cronin last week, Representative Sina the week before. And continuously pushing Groton and Dunstable need help. And even though the House of Representatives has started their budget process, chapter 70 came up for a vote and it did in fact fail. All of our legislators have assured me they are going to continue to refile, continue to fight and continue to move forward. The Senate has not conducted their budget process yet, but both of the senators have pledged to push forward on their side as well. So. We all know state government and just government in general is a little bit slow. But I believe with my relationships there and other relationships at the state level, you know, we can really try and make some movement here. I think former school committee members, former municipal officials would agree that these legislators, although a little different. This was not on their radar before. It is now because we are not the only district handling this issue. Um, our neighbors are handling it as well, um, so they know what's out there and people will.
Thank you. Our fourth question is, what is your plan to ensure the quality of the school district remains high?
So a large part of that, in my opinion, comes from ensuring that the curriculum that, that we're teaching is accessible to all the students. And that we're constantly reviewing data to understand are our students meeting their benchmarks? And if they're not, are we getting them intervention early enough? The earlier you get the intervention. The faster the student and start to succeed in school. And so I would want to see, I would want to be sure that our interventionists are available at the elementary level where they are needed. And also if there are issues in the middle school. I know that there's a lot of us. Issues right now with the math performance in the middle school. And it sounds like the interventionist at the middle school is not going to be available anymore. We're sharing with somebody. I want to make sure, I would push the superintendent to make sure that where kids need the help, that they are getting the help. And that the curriculum that we are offering is appropriate and. Is accessible to kids in a way where they can relate to the curriculum so that they can excel with their program. I also think because the cuts that we're going through right now. There's, there have been more cuts to, to teacher positions, which wasn't originally. Part of the plan. And so what I would ask of the new superintendent is that when he comes in, to look at the budget. And to look at the cuts that we had chosen to make and get, do you agree with these? What do you think the impact is going to be? Are you comfortable with this? And then as we roll out the year, I would want regular um. Feedback from the principals in the buildings and the teachers to understand how things are going with the cuts that were made. And how we can get them the support that they need if things are not going as well as they want. The academics of the district cannot slide because the district is too high at this point. We have to keep that performance up for our students.
So yes, we do have a high performing district. So my plan, I guess, would be to continue to work with the assistant superintendent. Who is the head of the curriculum district by, um, makes all the decisions, writes the grants for um, certain different curriculums. But with that, uh, make sure and, and really advocate for evidence-based curricula. Um, and continuous professional development for our educators. Uh, Desi puts out a list of the approved, um, recommended curriculum for the state. And it's my view that we should be following that. Um, and if we don't, we should be looking at ways to do that. Also investing in our existing teachers is the most effective way to optimize our budget and ensure the success of our students. Our teachers are our most valuable resource and by offering them with continuous professional development opportunities, we can unlock their complete potential. And assist them in providing even more value to our school and community. By investing in our teachers and we have some magnificent teachers here, spent the day with them. We are essentially investing in the future of our students and these students are. From Swallow Union all the way to the high school, pretty incredible. I used to be one of them. But um, you know, they're achieving at high levels and we want to make sure they have the opportunities. And the resources and the tools they need to continue to be successful. After and beyond.
Thank you. Our last question is. Where do you think we can save or cut costs with the least impact on services?
Unfortunately, I, I think impact has already happened to services, unfortunately. Um, so. What I would like to see going forward is. For students, for people, for teachers who interact directly with students. To be the last impacted. Because right now what we're dealing with is buildings that are going to have librarians. They're going to have cups and nurses, they're going to have cups and counselors. In some ways, these are people who are the first line of defense when a student. Is, is under duress. And I think that what we need to do as a whole is. Start to plan our budget based on only the two and a half percent increase. And, and put a budget together based on the town's means. And then figure out from there what we are able to maintain. And if we have to make cuts before we make cuts to actual people, are there other ways that we can go about saving money? So is it? Is it contract services? Is it percent increases for employees? Like what is it that we have to go through so that we can have the least impact? To student-facing teachers. Unfortunately, I feel like at this point, and it was made pretty clear last night, despite all of the comments that were made at the school committee meeting, that. There is, there is no willingness to go back and reevaluate the allocation of the budget at this point. And so I don't think any progress will be made on that until July 1st. So that, that's good. Thanks. Thank you.
So an idea, a couple of things here. Um, two school committee meetings ago, the superintendent brought up the fact about administration, administrators and raises. And uh, it's no secret that part of the budget, 85% is that salaries and benefits. For me, and I stated this at the meeting, I think that we have fantastic staff in the balance of the year. And they deserve more than we can literally give them. And that's, you know, because of the budget crisis, but looking at our market baskets. And market basket means our districts, we can pay ourselves to. One of them, another high performing district, Acton Boxborough. Actually, their model is they take their administrators and tie them into. Teachers in Unit A, which is teachers, and they all get the same. So if there's a budget increase for teachers and the union. Administrators get the same. Administrators don't have a union. But. That way they still get raises. It might not be as high, but it'll be fair. And. Again, because of the budget crisis we're in, we can't really do a lot more than that. As a committee though, and this is important. It, well, it was stated last night that an operational audit would be conducted in the district. Once the new superintendent comes in, that was the first thing I was going to really push, to have an operational audit of this district done, A through Z. Now, my colleague reminded me that there's price tag to it. I think hundred thousand dollars around there. Who's going to pay for that, right? But there's other firms, there's other companies that do it, there's other ways, there's grants out there. There's got to be something that won't affect the taxpayers here and our friends over in Groton, but will still allow us to see what's going on across everything, curriculum, budget, staffing and the like, literally everything A to Z. And then lastly, collaborating with our neighboring districts to reduce costs on shared services. Potentially transportation, maybe professional development. I mean, this is where I have an issue with the market baskets because we can utilize our friendships with Westford Academy, with Tinsborough High School, with North Middlesex. They might not be the same enrollment totals, they might not have the same demographic or monies that Groton Dunstable may, may not have. But they are our neighbors. What, what, North Reading, Westwood and Masconomet and other districts that are so far away. You know, what if we want to combine with PD and we need twenty teachers to do a professional development? We only have five. North Middlesex wants to do the same program, they have fifteen. You need twenty, neither district has twenty, well, let's combine and there's your twenty. So of course, there might be some legalese, there might be some other things to work out, but we're all in education, we all teach Massachusetts frameworks, state frameworks. There's got to be a way to collaborate, we do it as a community, we can certainly do it as a region school district.
Thank you. Those were all our advanced questions to the candidates, so I'll open it up for Q and A for those in the room and those on Zoom. We'll start with people in the room. Just go over the rules one more time, just raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question. You have about thirty to sixty seconds to ask your question, make sure it's a question, not just statement. Each candidate will respond thirty second, thirty to sixty seconds. Participant who asks a question will get a follow-up if needed, and then the candidate can respond again. When you're called on by moderator or Tim or myself, then please state your name and your residency. Because we're only letting Dunstable residents ask questions since it's a Dunstable only election. And please be respectful. So I'll open up to those in the room first and then we will turn to Zoom and see if everyone has any questions.
I am not going to talk about help budget.
And if, this is, the speed is right here, so if you could just like make sure you're speaking clearly so everyone can hear you on Zoom.
Although a very important, important topic is the budget, I think people have it up, so I'm going to try something different. One of the things I intended during the whole budget override process was a coffee hour with Lacy and Jason. And I, I don't, again, I don't know, I don't have kids, but I have brothers and kids and I've been dating my sister and her good friend. Yeah, can we load some apps or things like that that they use? As I don't have kids, I don't know what's being used in schools. And I know you mentioned advisory groups, possibilities. You mentioned also something similar, you know, getting the community involved. Would you advocate, and again, I don't know what legal issues are, an advisory group that includes people from the town that may not have kids in the school system, so they don't know, they might have some great ideas. They have no idea what's being used. Would you advocate for something like that?
May I ask you a clarification?
Yeah.
Are you interested in learning more about what's happening in this school? And or are you interested in giving idea to the school for how to do?
Okay, both, okay. So I'm just wondering if you would advocate for something like that. I know you mentioned teachers and school committee members and parents, but also turning to people that are not otherwise involved.
Okay, so I'm one of the people you're talking about. I don't have kids in this district either. But for me, fighting, defending and advocating for quality education or a good education or high performing education, you don't need kids to do that. So I would suggest, so in turn, yes, you know, I would advocate for that. You, myself, all of us, we are part of this community, you know. I can say we're, we're zero one eight two seven. So it doesn't matter if you have kids, doesn't matter your religion, what color you are, we're all Dunstable. So, you know, an advisor group, I'm not sure. I mean, we do have student, school councils in every building, which is open to staff, community members, administrators, I know because I served on it. And so, you know, they do kind of more improvement to the building, what does our building mean? What do we, what are our goals for our building, you know, what do we see? But, you know, they could maybe do another component to half and half. Trying to reduce the meetings that everyone has to attend, obviously, but you know. So in short, yes, of course, I would advocate for that. I said it numerous times, I believe in open dialogue in every table, no matter economic status, and the list goes on, so.
So I think it's a wonderful idea. One of the things that, that struck me in, in a lot of the meetings that the town has had or because of the budget is that because I don't feel like this will have necessarily an open door to the community. And there are of course a number of safety reasons why that may be. I feel like if you don't, if you're not active in the schools right now, you don't necessarily know what a twenty-first century education looks like. And so when we talk about the budget or we talk about the Chromebooks or we talk about whatever it is that our kids need, sometimes it's difficult to visualize that because I know like when I was in school in the eighties, we had pencil and paper, right? It was a lot simpler back then and it's not, the classroom doesn't look like that anymore. So I think having community outreach and a, and a venue for community members to give ideas and also to learn what the education looks like in the schools today is a wonderful idea. Because then it opens up the dialogue and it creates transparency. And it also, when you talk about then the school budget, if you were to want to talk about that, you, it has meaning to, to everybody because you know what the school needs to run and to function. And you've had a different educational experience. Maybe you, you have things that you can contribute and ideas that you can contribute to, to how we can do things differently. I, I think it's important. I mean, I think what I would like to see going forward in general is just more of a relationship between all of the community members so that the school becomes an integral part of the community. And, and, and the town is proud of the school and, and understands what's going on in the school. So yes, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
We'll just start in the center of the room, it shifts, so.
Jack McQuire, we're from Dunstable, Groton Street, three forty-eight, in case you need that, you guys are going to say. Our oldest is twenty-eight and he went to Groton Dunstable. We have three children that went to Groton Dunstable. And they've done exceptionally well in the world, I think. They're productive, happy and kind. The only thing that any parent wants, right? And at this point in time, after serving on many boards, many roles where no one else volunteered, I jumped in and learned as many people do in our small community. I feel that our district has the best representation on the school committee that it's ever had before in thirty, the twenty-eight plus years that I've been here. Receiving accolades even from my friends in Groton, who feel that we're super, super lucky to have the representation we have now with Raf and Lacy. What would you bring that's different to what's happening now?
That's a great question. And I'm glad that you feel that way about your current representation because that's very important. I don't particularly like the division that I've seen in the community. And so part of why I got involved and I said this is because I would like to create more collaboration with our community. And I would like to hold the superintendent accountable for a budget that the town can actually achieve. And I'm not sure that those things happened in this ground. And I think that it's okay sometimes to run for something that you believe in. And it, that has nothing to do with the person you happen to be running against. So my choice to run has nothing to do with Raf. It has to do with me and my desire to get involved in the community in this way. I served on the PTO, I made contributions to Swallow Union. I've served on the school council, made contributions to that, I've started getting involved in the town of Dunstable. And I want to do more. And when I asked around for, here's what I want to see happen, here's what I'd like to contribute to the community. Where do you think this would best, how could I best do this? I was told, well, the way to affect that change is school committee. And I think I would push back on the superintendent. I, the superintendent is, works for the district. If the superintendent is not giving you what you want to see, you have to push back on that. And so you would get more of that for me, more put, more pushback to, to ensure that the superintendent is responding to what the community is asking for. I also think it is important, and I understand we'll differ here. I do have kids in the district, I have four, they've gone through every school. I think it's important to be connected to the school in that way. I think it adds a different level, in my opinion, it's just my opinion. And I, I'm a collaborative person and I bring different people to the table. I don't expect everyone sitting at the table to have my opinion, nor would I want them to. Because the community is not made up of people who are exactly like me. And so I think the more people you can bring to the table from different backgrounds with different opinions, the better your solution is going to be. And so that's why I think I'm a good choice for this position.
Ready to ask them a question?
You can have a follow up.
Okay, so I'm confused.
Okay.
Because you talk about bringing other people back in, which I think is so important. And Raf talks about the school councils, which have seats on them, specifically in the charter, the community members. And then you talk about collaboration, but then you talk about pushing back against a superintendent. We're entering into a new superintendent, a new era, a new go arounds. It doesn't sound collaborative to me. It sounds like there's a lack of listening, although you say you want to listen. We talk, you've talked about bringing community members in, but then you talk about pushing back. And I think I'm still confused as to what's going to be different. Just last night, at last, last night's school committee meeting, there was an issue. And both of our representatives, both of our representatives, Lacy and Raf, received accolades for being facilitators in the room for opinions to be heard. And I don't see how yours, how you're actually giving us a concrete as to how you're going to be different. You say, you're saying you want to be and you have different opinions. But I'm, I'm still not seeing the connection of it. How, it isn't just getting tax dollars from us, it's about getting money from the state. It's about getting reimbursed from state mandates. It's, it's a bigger issue than just what happens here because two and a half percent isn't going to cover contract increases and such. So how do you see it going differently with you as our representative?
Well, I'm sorry that you don't see what I'm saying. I, I appreciate that you don't think that I, I mean, I guess my, my biggest contribution, and I'm, and I'm sorry that it, that you're not getting that sense from me, is that I, I, when I say, so all right, let me be really frank. The school committee brought a budget to our town that we couldn't afford and we voted it down. Now, the raises that you referenced a couple of weeks ago at the school committee meeting have been in the budget the entire time. And so what I don't understand is why those raises were not called out when the school committee could actually do something to change the budget. That didn't happen. Now, our current superintendent is very good at putting forward what she wants and getting what she wants. And what I'm saying is that if that is the personality that comes to the table, and I don't believe it's going to be the personality that comes to the table on July one, but you have to understand what your community is willing to absorb. And that both communities, it's not just Dunstable, it's Groton as well, they were loud and clear, we are not passing this override. But the fact that it was presented to us as a possibility that we might pass it, the number was way too high. And so I'm saying that you have to have a, a beat on what is going on in your community. And you have to be able to communicate that to the superintendent so that you actually get somewhere in the middle of what you all need. Because what happened to us is for the school, we got very little of what we needed because the ask was too high. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. And I, and I don't think that you need to surround yourself by people who feel the same way that you do. I think you, you have to listen to all opinions. And by listening to all opinions, then you move forward in a consensus that represents the community the best. And I, you know, that's, that's what I would bring to the table.
So I'm going to let Rafi also respond, so I know it's directed towards her, but I want both candidates to be able to respond to the question.
So a few things, you know, I'm going to bring myself back. But when you have this position, any position, you learn from things. You learn from mistakes, you learn from your colleagues, you learn from what happened last year and what not to do and what to do and what to do better. It's very easy for someone who's not involved and doesn't go to all these meetings to not realize the nuances of stuff. So when you join any organization, you might not know all the rules, A to Z, and that's completely fine, right? It's a learning thing. But there are, there are policies, there are procedures, there are things that, you know, people just don't realize because they don't do the research or look at it. And some of their big things they won't do, they're going to realize they can't by law, by policy, or in my case, being in the minority for four years. I brought up some of these issues in my term. And because the school committee was, in my opinion, a rubber stamped body for a long time, since twenty seventeen, there wasn't a lot of questions asked. It was put on display last night, when I asked questions, I get shut down. So I've never given up, I continue to fight for Dunstable. And, you know, people can say, oh, you should have done this, why didn't you do this, why didn't you do this? And it's like, what people don't realize is we don't come to just two meetings on Wednesday night. It's easy for anyone to come to a meeting for an hour. We meet with select board members, administrators, I meet with legislators, I meet with the superintendent. I've said and relayed these concerns to her prior to any vote or any budget coming out. And we know the current superintendent is sometimes not willing to listen to certain things. But that doesn't mean we're not doing it. And because some people aren't in those closed door meetings or aren't involved or just not paying attention, it doesn't mean the reps aren't fighting still continuously. I would have to say that because of some instances and how I've been treated as a school committee member and my predecessor before me, she left because of this reason and only stayed for one term, was because she was shut down and didn't feel listened to. But she did all the right things, asked the right questions, showed up. I can say in four years, I've never missed a meeting, I've never missed a vote, never missed a subcommittee meeting. I'm sick as a dog and still drag myself there. It's because I'm dedicated, the people trust me and it's experience. And, you know, the unfortunate side of being an incumbent is someone can just sling mud whenever they want, right? But we're working, we're working hard, so, you know, we'll continue to, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think you had your own words.
Yes, just Sarah Axon, that's right. And I'm not supposed to make a statement, but both of the answers are literally, like, those are your best answers of them. I, I really want somebody to fight back more and I understand that there's a lot of constraints on Dunstable being in the minority. And I feel, you know, we go to school committee meetings and we see the tension and we feel that we see people trying to fight back and it just doesn't seem to be as easy as possible. We weren't in a position that we're in now. we see people trying to fight back, and it just doesn't seem to be as easy as possible. We weren't, we weren't in a position that we're in now. Um, so thank you for running, and thank you for all that you do on this community. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about curriculum. I don't know too much about it, but you both kind of mentioned it. Um, you brought Rafi back for curriculum, um, you went more transparently in it, and you wanted to maybe use the ones that were listed on the DSE website. Um, and you wanted to be able to have a proven track record. I know a cur- a curriculum that is, is, um, proven successful over time. So I was just wondering how we could do that, because you mentioned in the middle school, I think that the math scores and, uh, um, English scores, the reading scores that are, um, below grade level. And how would we determine if it was the curriculum or custom schools, um, budget or something else? And how, how can we get the data points and success rate on the curriculum? Is the curriculum right now, we're using DSE recommended? Or is there better curriculum?
Right, okay. So, um, a couple of things, and I need to re, re-say the things, but, um, so I was more talking about literacy. Um, literacy is important for me. I went to this school, and I was one of these kids who had trouble reading. I was pulled out, I guess, by interventionists, um, you know, and I was reading below grade level. So thank God for our teachers here at Swallow Union, the reading specialists, and everyone. You saw tonight, I can read, right? Um, the program we use, I think it's phonics. Right? And I think the district recently shifted back the phonics for the earlier years here. But before that, they, in, in, in some cases, still use those Zecoffens. And that is not DSE approved. Um, it's not on their list. Um, there's a bunch of, uh, articles, um, universities, uh, school districts who come out and say, this is not working. This is not evidence based. You need to stop. You need to change. You need to figure it out, you know? Um, so in retrospect, why would we use that here? Why would we give our youngest learners something that's not sanctioned by the Department of DSE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? So, some people don't like mass frameworks, some people don't like, you know, the state's involvement over stuff, but if they say A, we need to go A, we can't just decide to go D. Now, um, in this district, curriculum is headed by the assistant superintendent. Technically, the school committee doesn't have the authority to say, like it or not, this is rules. You need to change the curriculum. We don't have that authority. But we can bring up questions, which I've done. We can bring up suggestions, which I've done, and some of my colleagues have done, about this very thing. Um, and it's evidence based. There's a whole, you know, all these podcasts, all these, um, studies, all this thing that say, use the science of reading. One of, uh, the state reps, so Dan Senna filed a bill in the House to make uh, the science of reading universal, the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, district wide, from Amherst all the way to Cape and everything in between. And it was voted down. But in that budget, in the governor's budget, there's thirty million dollars set aside for early literacy. Now, there's no bill attached to it, but it can go away. So that's what they would use if districts started to move over for funding or grants or whatever. So we could, so they, the state can help move and shift the districts and the Department of Education to use the evidence based curriculum. So whilst I can't, even though sometimes I'd like to barge into the assistant superintendent's office and throw down a study and demand, or change this and do this, you can't do that. You know, it doesn't do any favors when you're screaming at someone in a hallway, you know, um, under collaboration. They really need to come together, so.
And try to keep our answers under two minutes.
I thought there were times, sorry.
And I, I don't wanna, but I, I know other people have questions and I don't know, so.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, you both, you both have opportunities to answer.
How do we now report?
Right. So.
Structured now.
So I'm still learning a lot about the, the curriculum, and so here's what I'll tell you, that I, that I've learned so far. Is the district was using this literacy curriculum called Lucy Hawkins. And it wasn't just the district who was using it. It was many people using this. So it wasn't like we were doing something that no one else was doing. But it was teaching literacy in a way that where it would have a word on a page and a picture. And so what the teacher would do is say, say it was cat. It said cat, and there was a picture of a cat, and the teacher would play, well, what does the sea make? Well, what does the picture look like? That's a cat. And so the child was learning, like, I'm looking at the sea, I'm looking at the picture, oh, that must be a cat. But unfortunately, with that process, which many, many people were using, and Lucy Hawkins, in my opinion, are very wealthy on this program, when she, that she pushed, right? And, but what was happening is, what I learned in the, the research I've started to do is that we're actually not born, our brains are not born wired to read. They're born more, they're pictorial. And so it's a process to teach a child how to read. And this m- method of, of teaching, although widely adapted, was actually not effective, because you were getting someone who was guessing. They were not learning to sound it out. They didn't understand what the letters, what the sounds that they made, but that the word came together. Long story longer, right? So GD is like, okay, this, there's a lot of issues that are starting to come out about this curriculum. What do we need to provide our students to get them back on track? The other thing is that, you know, our reading scores were down, so the i- it's there, like, the evidence is there, right? That this isn't working. So when you start to get that feedback through testing and, and even just talk to a teacher, how's it going? You know, what's, what's working, what's not working? When you start to get that feedback, and you're realizing that your curriculum is not helpful to students, well, what are we gonna do to fix it? Well, phonics. Right? You probably had phonics, right? I had phonics. I know that they've started to bring it back into the curriculum. Phonics is tried and true. Right? You gotta teach kids what, what sounds letters make, how to put them together, how to create a word. It, it works every time. They've started bringing that back into the curriculum now, and kids are, their reading ability is getting better. The other thing that they're doing is classrooms are now filled with decodable books. And so what that, so the simple term is, or the simple description is, you have books with words in them that kids at that grade level should be able to read, and they're using their phonics and they're going cat. Cat, and they're reading simple sentences. And now their brain is making a connection between the letters and the word that it makes. And then you're providing texts that are culturally relevant to students. So if a student is reading a text, and they don't understand, like, say it's about butterflies. And they've never seen a butterfly. They've not, they've never been outside of a room. They have no idea what the outdoors looks like. They've never seen a butterfly. They're gonna have kind of trouble seeing themselves in that text. So you have to make sure that the text in your classroom reflect the students in the classroom, that, so that they can pull something out of it, and that helps them understand. So that's, I gotta wrap it up. Okay. Anyway, I'm really excited about this. If you ever want to talk about literacy and learning all that stuff, about how, how the, the child's brain works, but anyway. The, the most important thing is getting your data. I have found that sometimes data seems hard to come by in the district, and I think it would be great if it was regularly discussed. And then when we, I, when we find problems in an area, we look at, well, what's going on here that we need to fix? And that, that's what I was referring to. Yes.
Thank you.
If I will.
Hi.
Go to Nikki and then you.
Um, I, I wanted to bring it back to last night and what the teachers were bringing forward. Um, and one of
Sorry, can you state who you are and where you're from?
Well, Dunstable.
Thank you.
Ex-teacher at Swallow, ex-teacher at the middle school, and I'm still trying to be involved. It's like candy, but with this administration, the door's always been shut. Um, so, and by the way, we have an expert here who went to Columbia, studied with Lucy Hawkins, and now is a complete advocate for uh, phonics, and she's on the school committee and has been shutting out her advanced dress talk.
Great job with that.
Oh, that's, well, and my daughter. That's standing as well. Um, but what I want to get back to is before Laura Chessen, and even before, before Laura Chessen, during the two thousand five, two thousand eight and beyond, um, there were three hundred more students than Groton was for. And there were half the administrators. I think that's a serious problem, because we were an outstanding district then. I don't see how the increase of someone supervising someone of supervising someone ends up anything, any teacher and any kid.
So it's your
It's like having big brother, big sister. So the question to me is, how are you guys going to, because you can't go in and change those line items, how are you gonna work with that new uh, superintendent as he comes in? And I think he's gonna be an open book for you to work collaboratively to break down some of these lines that are laid out legally, but which you should be able to express opinions about. And advocate for that kind of a change. The results are there. You can see all the testing and everything else from, from that time period. And Jackie and her family, the perfect examples of kids that came out of that time. They got all the specialties. So how are you guys going to not go back? That wasn't going back. That was empowering teachers to do the work they know how to do and not hiring people who really have what going, except for big brother, big sister.
Rafi, what's your point?
Um, so I guess, uh, one of the things the school committee mentioned about last night was having the superintendent come in early in May, rather than waiting for him to come in at the end of June. His official start date is June twentieth. Um, the current superintendent's official end date is July nineteenth. So there is a month of transition between the two administrations, which is, uh, in my opinion, good and helpful. And with that, the school committee has set aside their own, um, meetings with him. Um, I think it would be a mistake to think this new superintendent doesn't know what's going on here. So, um, I would hope that when he comes here, you know, he already has some sort of plan of action and to get started. Um, some of my colleagues and I, individually and together, um, have talked about some things. Budgetary matters, um, uh, policies, um, and a few other things that we would like, probably at the front of the line. Um, but, you know, it's kind of this give and take process. He's new. Um, so we need to kind of shepherd him along, if you will, but also not lose our sight of what we want to continue to do as well.
Okay. Uh, can you just clarify, are you asking how we're going to address certain line items? I, I'm just, I just, can you clarify?
Well, I think line items can come out of it, but I think to look historically and, and listen to teachers like Kelly Putkin, I don't know, a month ago, and presented information to the school committee, she's been here for almost thirty years. They have the history
Right.
that other people don't have, and they can talk about what, and how decisions got made in the way that they were, so um, I feel like what we saw last night was a trip with Isberg, and that these people have been coming time after time after time and to be empowered. And I think that if who is the school committee, I, I really appreciate how people performed last night. It was clear that the people on the school committee are ready for change themselves, but to seriously talk with the superintendent and say, I'm probably talking to my
Well, I, I mean, I, I'll answer.
What I was saying is encouraging him to sit down with the people who have lived through this and who can actually provide ways that it was effective. And, and we had successful students coming out, instead of shutting them down. How will you approach that with a new superintendent? And realize that it isn't in your purview.
Right. Well, I, well, I think the most important thing for the new superintendent to do, and what I would advocate for, is to put, to put the power back into the schools. The people who are running the schools, the principals, know their schools well. They need to be allowed to do their job. They need to be allowed to run their school. And I'm a, we have some of the best staff, the best teachers around. Why don't we trust them to do their jobs? That is, that has blown my mind for years now. I have experience with these teachers with my own kids, and I understand, like, that, that's just my experience, but I would trust these teachers. I believe that they know what they are doing, what they need to do it, how to get it done. And the principals in these buildings know their staff, and they know their kids. And so I would be advocating for multiple meetings in the beginning to get to, he's got, he's gotta learn the, the community, right? He's coming into a community that's well-formed. He has to learn the community. And I think, based on his interview, I'm hopeful that he is a collaborative person who actually trusts the people who are in the roles. And so, and, and I would like to see le- fewer layers and more independence given to the individual schools, so the principals and their teachers can, can teach their kids the way that they see fit. I think you, that's, you, you, that's a priority, and you make it very clear that that's a priority. And then hopefully by doing that, some of the other things in the budget, when I'm talking about building a budget back from zero, that's part of what I'm talking about. What do you need to create a district? What do you need to have in your schools? What are we left with if we do that? What's the number look like? That's, that's part of what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
And so the question?
Yes, you heard me a little bit. You said there was no committee numbers.
No, I'm sorry.
You said there was no effective school committee number. That was on it.
Who are you, first of all?
I'm Ryan Inslee, and I'm from Dunstable. Um, I'm, I am gonna ask about the budget, because I, I think without resources, none of this is possible, and my schools, my kids go to the schools. And I think next year is gonna be just as bad as this year. I hate to, I hate to tell people that, the way the budget is constructed, so I, I'd like to ask specifically about the budget. So both of you have made accountability a part of your platform, going so far as to say you can hold each line of the budget to account with the new superintendent. I've seen that from both of these candidates. Mr. Blythe, you've been on the committee for four years. You voted for all the budgets that passed to include the override budget, that was an eleven percent assessment increase for the town, and included all of the items that you said were going to be held to account. Ms. Andrew Lee, you publicly supported the override, which included the same amount of, of funding. I also supported the override. Both of you have said you're gonna keep it to two and a half percent. This was a eleven percent assessment increase, over an eight percent increase to the school budget, and if you extrapolate that into the future, there will be ten and twelve percent increases. So there's gonna be major cuts this year, and there's gonna be major cuts next year, unless we get more specific. So although I believe in performance and curriculum, I, I would like to ask about the budget, so. Uh, given that accountability is a central theme to both of your campaigns, and that, uh, neither of you, um, Mr. Blythe, you just said in your, in your answer that you haven't been able to advocate for budget cuts in the last few years because, I think you said you were in a minority on the school committee. And Ms. Drill, you've never done this before, so you don't know what it's like to have to, to advocate for this. So what are you going to do specifically to push for this accountability that you're making center parts of your team, so that we can actually have budget peace in this community?
That's a lot of the question.
Yeah, you, you probably have to repeat it.
Oh, but I had thoughts while you were talking, and I've got to get them back. Hold on. Um.
Can you actually repeat it? Let's cut off the first part.
Sure. So far, neither of you have demonstrated to me that you can hold a budget accountable. You were a school committee member, and you have never been a school committee member, and you're advocating for the override. So what's gonna be different in the next three years? How are you actually specifically gonna hold a budget to account, so we can have budget peace in this community?
Standing on.
No.
His experience, you want to start with that?
It's true. So, no one has a crystal ball, right? The reason I voted in the superintendent search committee for this candidate for his first interview, his second interview, and his final interview with the school committee, is because I thought that he had the most experience and double-headedness with his budgetary process in his history. He said it, he wouldn't go, he's never gone above three percent. I understand Maine is completely different than Rock Dunstable, or his, wherever his district in McCarroll. Um, but for now, when he comes here, I assume this will be one of the first, uh, statements from the school committee collectively. We got a message loud. We got a message loud and clear from the majority of the whole town saying no to an override. We know there will be more cuts next year. I think so far maybe ten and they're probably calling higher. And in twenty twenty seven, another ten, which could also climb higher. As you know, being a former school committee member, you can only tell him certain things. You can't even tell him stuff. Be quite honest. It's a collaborative relationship. We don't have that authority to say you have to do X, Y, and Z. You have to cut it, you know, this and this and this and give them specifics. We can go after the whole. Piece of it, like when it's broken down into operation, staffing and this, but we can't say. We want it at such a percent. So yes, I did say stick into that. And I can keep advocating for it and he should see the history, realizing we can't afford it. And hopefully together come up with some sort of solution, but. I mean, it's a reality. It it's math too, basically. I mean, we don't have the money to pay for it. So it's gonna have to come through more cuts and more this and more that. And no one likes it, but we can't force them to do it either. We can only advocate for it so much. I wish we could do more on budget stuff, curriculum stuff, on on everything, but. As you've seen and you know firsthand, sometimes when you ask the hard questions, it's been turned away. And that too, I hope when he comes here and starts, he brings a new working environment with him. So that people can ask these questions and not get shunned or shut out or silenced. And maybe we can actually have a long, productive dialogue. Whether it be at a meeting, at an executive session, at a professional consultation with the union, whatever it is, but. To be frank, we don't know this guy quite yet and what he's gonna bring all the years. So once we meet him and we tell him. Kind of what our expectations are and then he may have his own. It's just about compromise. And again, I have faith in some of my colleagues. I have faith in this new person and we're gonna get it done.
Yeah. So I just wanna, thanks for bringing it up. I now acknowledge I was a supporter of the override. Um and my thinking behind that was twofold. The first is. Our but our town's budget was, it was a single budget, right? It was municipality and school combined. Last year, we had Dunstable had a municipal only override. I voted in favor of that and it didn't pass. And every time I see a police officer, I I apologize. Um but this year coming around, I I felt that the the municipal side desperately needed the money. I knew the school side needed the money as well. I wasn't sure that they needed the entire ask, but I wasn't going to nitpick, right? That was not my place as a community member. And so what I had been hoping would happen was that Dunstable would pass the override. Regardless of what Grotten did and our municipal services would be funded and then the ask on the school side would be less. Either because Grotten didn't pass or because a new superintendent came in and made different choices. That that was my goal, which is why I advocated for it. I understand that that makes it hard to believe that I could be fiscally responsible, so I appreciate that. But just so you understand my rationale there, the first thing that I would do for the budget is bring Dunstable to the table. And I would bring them to the table all the time. I've I've spoken with some of our advisory board members and our select board members and they said to me, you know, we finally got. Asked to participate this year when there was a budget crisis, right? And we have this huge override ask, but we're part of this district too. We want to sit at the table through hundred and sixty-five days of the year. And so I said to them, okay. Why don't you have it? I don't understand why you've never had it before. So that's the first thing. You have to work with both towns. You have to work with the select boards, the advisory board. You have to understand what their means are and they both belong at the table. Even though our percentage of students is lower than Grotten's. So I think the the TRICOM group that was formed this year to help with this override. Decision is something that we need to build on that. We can't go back to the way that it was. Say ten months ago where Dunstable didn't have a seat at the table. So that that's the first thing. I would say last night, if you watched the school committee meeting and you heard the teachers give their statements. If you ask the teachers if there could be other cuts other than the ones that were chosen to be made. They will tell you that there are many. Let's ask them, right? Let's get information from them. Where do they see the waste? Because they see it. They absolutely see it. And and so we have to stop that and figure out with the people in the classroom. What do you need? What is excessive? What can we cut so that it doesn't impact your job? And that's what I would do more of is actually reaching out to the people who are doing the job every day. And finding out what they need and what they don't, because lots of times those those decisions are made at a level. And then when it, when the people who it's impacting don't agree with those decisions, does that make any sense to you? It doesn't make sense to me. And so I would want to bring them to to the table early on to figure out. What are their ideas for how to get from A to B? And I also believe, and I don't have experience with contract negotiations, so I'm just going to tell you how like what I would like to see happen. If you have a district and you have a certain increase or a. As if you, when you're negotiating your contract and and that's where that's administrators, it's teachers, it's everybody. What is more important? And this is actual, I'm I'm honestly asking this to the people at the table. Is it more important for you to have such and such of a COLA increase or is it more important for you to save staff? We have to come together and figure out, like, they need to be part of that conversation so that we understand. If they, if contracts are requiring certain increases every year and our town can't sustain those increases. We have to put that on the table and discuss it. And so those those are the areas that I would look at to try to to try to get the budget under control. Does that answer your question?
So two and a half percent on thirteen million and I didn't look up the number, I was just doing rough maths, three hundred and twenty-five thousand or about what the town gets for new revenue. So in order to hold the two and a half, there can be massive cuts in this school. Do you or do you not support that?
Well, can we make other decisions with the money that we have to avoid some of the cuts that might have to be made if we didn't? That's what I want. That's what I want to look at. I don't want to, I don't want to start from the status quo.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I am.
Um no, I can do beautiful. So um depends on what the three hundred thousand dollars is.
That's the full town. That would be.
No, if it's three. Oh, so you're talking about municipal.
Two and a half, holding a two and a half in the school budget, you pretty much wipe out any increases for the entire town.
Right. That was the question.
So in the past, you voted for override if you wanted to hold it up, but you're saying now that you're going to hold it to two and a half percent. So I'm I'm asking if it's more than two and a half percent, are you going to continue to hold it to two and a half or are you going to go?
You know, part of me wants to say no, you know, you don't want to get rid of all these services, but you know, we have to look at it. Do I want to slash three hundred thousand dollars out of Dunstable's budget and lose highway, fire, police? And the list goes on. The town administrator and and sharing our already shared town clerk with Pepperell. And you know, all the other services we have. No, of course, I don't want to lose any of those people, those positions, those staff. Quite frankly, that's the definition of decimating the town, which means the state will come in in receivership and take over. Make all the decisions. There would be no elected officials and we would basically be handing the keys of the city of the town to the state. So do I want that to happen? Absolutely not. But at the same time, as you know, being a school committee member, a former one. Taking some of these votes and supporting the overrides in your tenure. It's a really tough decision. And at the same time too, you don't want to decimate the schools. You don't want to upset these young learners and have them not be prepared for the world. So I can say all this now and it is very much true, but when it comes in front of us, we are gonna have to look at it. You know, in the summer, um we Grotten set up Grotten, set up their own TRICOM board. Of the town manager, the select board, the um finance committee, rotten representatives and school administration. I spoke with our town administrator and I said, I think we need one not to rival them. But to mirror them so we can do what Grotten's doing. So I was on it. Jason was on it. Um superintendent, business, finance, advisory board, select board. And we started that process collaboratively already. Um both towns felt that why do the same thing separately when we're talking about the same thing? So both were in essence dissolved and joined together. So I believe that can still happen, that can still go on. It still needs to be um talked about and get from both sides. Because whatever we do, Grotten's not going to be all the same numbers and same staff or whatever that we are, but they are gonna lose things too. So it's really this collaboration piece of trying to figure it out. What are we gonna do? And also with the legislature. And by that time, hopefully, chapter seven will be voted on again, whether it be in the senate or in the house for a collective committee. And you know, it'll trickle on down here. I mean. We could spend all night predicting the future, but I mean, it it's hard to and we don't want to go down that rabbit hole and and the issues happen.
Yeah, I was just surprised to hear you say you're gonna hold it to two and a half. That's why I was asking the question.
We want to be budget conscious, right? But I'm sorry, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, I'm Sarah Keeney on the Moncon Street. Um my question, and I'm gonna go back to any folks know me, so. Back to I don't remember what it was, when we had a meeting at the town hall with the rumor that they're going to deregionalize. As a parent of three young kids, like that scare the crap out of me. And we moved specifically to this town to for the school district, for the town, for the services. How are you gonna ensure as a school committee member that someone like me should just pack up and get out of this town? Or like that you're gonna ensure the quality of the school district for young families? It was great in when Rocky was there. It was great when David Quanter there, but like, how do you ensure those families that have young kids? And see this happening and are like, holy crap, what are we gonna do? Um because I love to hear success stories, but what about the people who have come here for that? I wanna, you know, and I don't want to fear longer, but like, that's how people are feeling that have young kids in elementary, middle and high school. Moment um as we hear all these cuts. So as a school committee, how are you gonna ensure these families or these people with kids? Um not just pack up and leave, but you will then also have a detrimental effect on our community at large.
I'm gonna take it first. Um. So the first thing is I I know the meeting that you're referring to and I think that. I'm not, you're not asking this, but I'm not of of in favor of deregionalizing. Um and I think that. Again, we have to figure out what kind of a district we want to be. And what kind of a town we want to be. And then we have to fund those things within our means. And. There, I mean, what I could, I could sit here and tell you all the the problems that I know about and they're at every level, right? So. I think part of it is the budget cuts that have been made. The management of the budget recently in the last handful of years has not been done in a way. So that we can preserve student contact positions. So I would want to bring that back, bring as many of those positions back. And find other areas to make cuts. I mean, there's the I, there's like so, there's there's so much that I want to talk about and I know I have two minutes. I think that at the elementary level. We need to ensure that our classroom teachers have the materials that they need and have the support that they need. I think once we can start to put. The decision-making back in the buildings. And if we can get it feedback from our teachers to understand what cuts they can live with. And what cuts are detrimental, then we can start to rebuild the district. And it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, my my older kids were here in two thousand ten. When we had a major budget issue and they lost their librarian. And my younger stepson, who was on IEP, lost some special services that he needed. I mean, it was horrendous. It took, it takes years for those services to come back. So I feel like we are, sorry?
So there's there's still not that. Those cuts never came back.
Well, the librarian did come back and she just got cut again. She just got cut again. Yeah.
So.
So I guess what I'm saying is it's not a, it's not a quick fix. And and so I don't want to mislead people to believing that, you know, next year, everything is going to be better. But I think what what we can do for our children is preserve their classroom teachers and preserve the people who they interact with. Regularly and and really start to take in the the advice of the teachers. And make cuts in other areas and not the areas that they've been made. And I do believe that the district can come back to where it was. Um and I'm and I'm not positive that I've answered your question, but.
So it was about deregization with.
It wasn't necessarily, but that's the meeting that brought so many people to town hall, more than I've ever seen actually.
No, you're right. That's that's the first time we've seen. That's the first time we've seen people who get involved in that meeting. Um so here's the thing. I'll say this.
Of that conversation.
Right, so. So I'll say this, um I do not support deregization across the land. It's it's, no one can persuade me of it. Um and I feel it's important to explain the entire process. So. For deregization actually happen. Think of it like a divorce. The, but there's a lot of hoops we have to jump over. Okay, so I'll skip that.
But I wanted to know what you would say to reassure these families that they should stick it out. Because they're gonna represent these families. They're gonna make us feel like we're here because of the school district.
So I guess, but it's important that part of the process is the school committee has to vote, the selectman has to vote, goes to town meeting. And all these other hoops. So.
Assurance is that we won't go through the process.
So what I'm saying is, I don't believe the current school committee, there's seven members, you would have a majority. To push that through. I don't support it. I know Grotten reps don't support it. I'm pretty sure my colleague in Dunstable doesn't support it. Um not to mention, because of these budget constraints, neither town can afford that. By law, you need a superintendent, uh head of um uh special education and a business and finance manager. Three positions. They all make six favors. So we don't have the money to afford that. Grotten doesn't have the money to afford it. So right there, you can't even deregionalize. Public opinion doesn't support it. I, as soon as it was brought up by Dunstable municipal officials at a school committee meeting, I met with them the next day. And pleaded them to not go through with the situation, especially because of the budget problem. They wanted to put a non-binary referendum on the April second vote, which we also advocated to them, do not do. Because you're throwing in a giant situation to not, I don't say fear mortar, but make people nervous. On something that's not even potentially or gonna happen. So what I say to families and what I reassure them, and quite frankly, I know a lot of families who have left. Who bring their kids out of districts and neighboring districts. And it does hurt me because I went through the Swallow Union all the way to high school, finished all grades. And had a good time, right? And I would wish that the kids after me, going through the same buildings, going through the same um teachers and and and. Life as as a student would enjoy that as well. And for me to see a district that I love, that I'm very involved with, separate and collapse and and whatever. On my watch is not gonna happen. I, if after the budget vote failed, a school committee member from Grotton, former one, said. I believe because he was not uh happy with the town's decision, thought, well, maybe we should deregionalize. I believe because he was not, uh, happy with the town's decision, thought, well, maybe we should deregionalize. But the funny thing is, that was the same person who pushed back against Dunstable officials who brought it up in the first place to say that's never gonna happen. So I wanna reassure the community, whether you have kids in the district, whether you are a young family or your kids are about to graduate. I do not support separating rotten Dunstable out of a regional school district. I believe uniting and coming together, there's a reason why we merged together back by the seventies. And, you know, are we perfect? Do we have problems? Absolutely. But our problems, our financial problems and everything else would be way worse if we separated.
We'll go back to anyone else who hasn't asked a question.
Yeah, and I don't think you said your name or where you're from before, maybe we just do that now, ran right into it, so.
Erica Lynn, uh, one fifty-three, off McCon Street. I'm thinking this is a crazy question, but I'm not sure. Um, I know I have a theory, uh, and I'm not gonna pick on GD, and this is happening across the board, we've got many people who've mentioned testing scores. And it all started prior to COVID, it's not just GD, it's at the state level, it's at the national level. So I know I have a theory as to why that is, but I'm curious if you guys have theories, and so what are they? Is it just the curriculum? Is it something else? What are your thoughts on that?
I didn't understand the question, I don't know if they do or not, sorry.
Testing scores have gone down, not just in, at GD, they've gone down at the state level, they've gone down at the national level since two thousand seventeen, so it's not COVID, this was prior to COVID. I know I have a theory as to why that is.
Testing scores have gone down.
Why testing scores have gone down, and, um, so I'm curious if you have theories, and so what are they? Again, is it curriculum? Is it something else? And, you know, cause a big piece of, or I'm gonna run, a big piece of being on the school committee is, you know, talking about policy and things like that, so.
Oh, um, so, I read an article the other day, um, Educational Weekly, or one of those educational journals. Um, and they equate, which made me think of this, that the reason some students, I'm not gonna use the COVID example, right? But the reason some students are struggling, um, not really understanding, having trouble reading, having trouble, you know, with MCAS, whatever the case may be. Um, I think is because of technology. I don't wanna blame technology, and obviously it's twenty twenty-four, AI, we need to move in that direction. But I, someone alluded to the fact that, you know, um, way back when, they used to use pencils and paper. I mean, I graduated in twenty ten and we used pencils and paper, so it's not like, it's a fun thing. But now they use computers, they do math on the computers, they do, um, you know, reading from it. But they also use screens and technology at home. Um, iPads, phones, laptops, whatever it is, which according to these articles diminish children's ability and actually want to learn. And the teachers see it. And it's a catch twenty-two, because that's the way literally the world is moving with technology. But at the same time too, you don't wanna be buried in screens all day. So it's this, this notion of, you know, maybe there should be less screens during the day, uh, in schools. Um, I don't know what that would look like, cause like I said, they do everything on screens, but think of it, they do academic stuff, nine AM to three, or whatever the hours are for each of the buildings, and then they go home. What do they do? They're on TikTok, they're on Facebook, they're on, you know, whatever they're on, they're texting their friends, you know? And based off these articles, it's just saying that desire and that want to learn isn't there anymore. Because you can Google things now, because you can use chat G T, uh, whatever the thing is, you know? There we go, thank you, it's been a long day. Um, you know, and it's kind of like, you don't really have to use your brain as much, so that's what I think.
So I, I don't, um, I haven't done research on this data, what I would do is I'd work into it and go back to on what I'm thinking. I'm, I'm not necessarily sure that I agree with, with my opponent's take on it. I would wonder if it has to do with the curriculum in terms of, are we giving students what they need to learn? And is the curriculum geared towards testing only, so is there not a, a deep understanding of content? And I'm, I'm not sure about that, I, I would love to hear your theory, even though I know that's not having the question, but, um, I wonder if the curriculum recently has not been, if it's not been comprehensive enough so that students are able to take what they're learning and apply it in a broad way to the testing, like if they're only, do you know what I'm saying, like if you're only being taught to the test and a question comes in a different format, is, is that causing issue? I don't, I'm not sure, I don't, and, and I'll just be honest, I'm not sure, but I I'll look into it, yeah.
So we, we asked online, anyone on Zoom, um, no one has said yes, but I'll just put it out there, if anyone wants to come off mute and ask a question, anyone on Zoom? Please do so now, if it was.
Back in the fire again, hi. Um, so are you suggesting then that the curriculum isn't appropriate for the testing?
No, what I just said was that I don't have data on why the test scores are.
So you don't know?
So I don't know.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering, and then I was going, going back to another thing that you had said about contract negotiations. And how you would like to see them go where you talk about, um, eliminating positions or not having an increase in pay. Are, are you, are you saying that that's not what happens now in negotiations?
Well, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know what.
Okay, so you were just saying maybe that's what's happening.
No, what I was saying is that I think that in order to support increases for staff and administration, it has to somehow relate to the increase in the town's taxes, right? You can't expect everyone to get, say, I'm making this up, okay, this is not actual, a ten percent increase if the town's revenue is increasing by two and a half percent, that is not a sustainable trajectory. So all I'm suggesting is that in negotiations, that those things somehow come together and are tied together. You can't have people asking for something up here if the town can only pay for something down here.
And you do understand that our educators do not get ten percent increases?
I absolutely do understand that.
So, so by saying that though, it implies that that isn't happening in negotiations and that our negotiations aren't happening with the state. Which you don't necessarily know that they're not.
Here's a question for.
I, I don't.
Yeah, like how do, how does that happen in negotiations? Do you, are you in, uh, you might not even be in those, I don't even know how it happens.
So we are in negotiations now, unfortunately, and because it's about personnel and we talked about it in executive session, we, I can't by law talk about it.
It's not public knowledge.
But, but.
Because of the law.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so it's not like, it's not like I don't wanna answer it and I hate not being able to.
Right.
Um, but they are, and we are looking at, you know, ways to treat them fairly and, 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 you know, continue to keep going, but, um, really all I can say.
No, I know, it's just like left it down, one there to suggest that that doesn't happen, that it don't.
We have a question for me. What's up?
She had her hand over.
Is the question for both candidates?
Yes.
It is, well, back to the negotiations, I mean, but, so, is teacher performance, and who didn't know, and what are teachers, um, evaluated on? I just find it just heartening that, you know, one of my kids several years ago had a teacher, and my neighbor says, oh my goodness, my son has him, he's just terrible, and he's in college. And the teacher's still there, so, I mean, I'm just saying, like, with those negotiations, with those raises are, what, what is, or what are they based on? Respendence, the teacher there every day?
So, um, I guess two-part question, so, teacher evaluations, they're done by the principal of the building. Um, kind of again, we don't get, we're not privy to that information, we don't deal with that. Uh, the superintendent sees those, I believe, as well. Um, and then your other question was, you asked, there was two parts.
It was just that, like, what are they evaluated on? You can't discuss.
It's not that we can't discuss, but, uh, you know, I mean, I guess it's their performance, their, you know, just like any job performance, but because it's.
To me, is they cut first one, the last one to hire is cut, would.
That's still true, that's a thing here, yeah, some of our staff.
I think that's unfortunate.
Some of the staff, we recently just cut, are new teachers that just.
We hired, yes, exactly. I, I'm a text, award fires.
Right, of course.
We have a question from. Uh, I have a question online that I'd like them to be able to ask, since we've been waiting, Matt, can you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, um, I just, I hear a lot about the, you know, the increase, the two point five limiting, you know, the increase is two point five. How would you both suggest that we do that when Groton has all the power? And we're very limited on, on how we can work with them on the growth where they can, they're able to increase the school's budget without an override, where we would actually need one, based on what they're able to raise for that.
Matt, can you just quickly state where, what town you're in?
Oh, I'm in Dunstable.
Thank you. Did you both hear the question?
Yeah, I did, um, so Matt, I think just as Dunstable was brought to the table this year for this budget cycle. And I know this is new for Dunstable, we were asked how much we could contribute. I think that we have to continue the conversation in that direction, and so because our revenue stream is smaller, I think that the conversation has to lead with Dunstable, and so that's what I would advocate for. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, it does.
Okay.
So, um, it is true that as long as I've been on it, and probably before my time, um, Groton usually comes out with uh, their numbers and what they can afford. And for the longest time, Dunstable being a smaller partner, um, just had to go with it. Um, in my opinion, it's the first year and a half now that we have a town administrator, and I've worked with three or four here, that, um, is really involved, uh, is a good town administrator, always there for all of us, um, advocates for us when we need it. Um, so it's true, Gro, uh, this year in particular, Dunstable came with what we could afford, which in the past has never been a thing. Um, I know some Groton reps and some Groton residents were not too happy about that and think that they have to come and bail Dunstable out all the time. And what they don't realize is, we don't have the businesses they do, we don't have the population they do. You know, we have, uh, thirty-three hundred around, and they have ten thousand. Um, so, when they, when, you know, we all come to the table and we were able to tell them what we could afford, um, that's when they adjusted their number and that's when you get kind of the pushback. So I don't think, and I don't want, and I don't promote this tip for tap between towns and we're better and they're better and they, you know, this and that, right? But, um, you know, it's, it would be feeding off of and, and, and continuing with the tri-board we created that you were a part of, that we, you know, bring for the next cycle, bring us all to the table now. Before, we didn't have that, it was created in July, August. So now that it's already created, fill those, you know, same town administrators, same town manager, the selectmen, the advisory board, finance committee, and the rest of them. And now we know what to do from just this last year alone, and what not to do, and what to ask, and where to ask and where to go, and, and all this other stuff. So I think it's been a learning curve a little bit. Um, everything is new sometimes and new, you know, it might look scary, um, but, you know, hopefully it'll work out.
Does that answer your question, Matt? Do you have any follow-up?
No, that was good, I, you know, that's, I think it's a, it's a balancing act between the two towns really, and, um, I, you know, I look forward to the future with that. Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, given that we are approaching second hour, everyone's tired, but. What's up?
I just played that kind of sort of.
Do you have a question?
Well, about the teacher contract negotiations, and if you know, is, you're saying, fine? I thought you were gonna say.
I think we should limit it to the, to questions for the candidate, rather than state.
I would suggest the candidates, although some may know this already, look back at the history of what teachers have given up on the basis of their, why the health there is high, because they took low percentages during that whole time of that numbers. So, that's, I guess that's not a question, but it's a, hopefully, you know, if you don't have the answer, go.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I thank everyone very much for coming, this is very informative.
I don't.
You got a closing statement if you'd like, you do not have to.
Usually how it's done.
That was, I did say one minute closing for the candidates, but if you're tired and just wanna go home, like, that's fine, but.
Do you have a closing statement?
So I'll just say that I appreciate, uh, people watching on Zoom, people coming out tonight. Um, you know, this election is important, um, both towns are watching, unfortunately, but it's a good thing. Um, and I just wanna say, I have enjoyed working for the town constable, I've enjoyed the relationships I've created over the years. Um, I really look forward to hopefully continuing on as your representative. And, um, you know, more information on me or the campaign, raphaelgod.com, or raphaelgod, uh, or G D R S D on Facebook. Um, you all know where I am, so you can always contact me, my door's always open, and I look forward to talking to people I haven't met, even more so after campaigning. So thank you all, and don't forget to vote on May twenty-first, and I appreciate it.
And I just say, um, I just wanted to thank the PTO for putting on this event, it's a very busy time in May for the PTO and the school, and thanks to all of you for coming. And everybody on Zoom and for your thoughtful questions. Um, the best thing that you can do is learn about the candidates and go exercise your right to vote on May twenty-first. And one of the things that I've appreciated most about running is just meeting people in town who I wouldn't normally have come into contact with and hearing from them, and hearing from them about what they'd like to see, what they think is working well and what they think isn't working well. And so I just thank everybody who has spoken to me and given me their feedback, and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, thank you both for coming, I really appreciate it.
Even around the line. Take care.